Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council. I'm Dan Hillmer. I'm serving as mayor and will run the meeting. The first item on this evening's agenda is roll call. Would Allison, our city clerk, please provide a roll call?
Councilmember Candell?
I am here.
Councilmember Har?
I'm here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Mayor Hillmer?
I am here. Next on the agenda is our collective stating of this pledge of allegiance. Would you please join me if you're able? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And that's the time for public comment, certainly for matters of the agenda. Are there members of the public that would like to provide public comment on items? Allison, do you see anybody in the queue?
Yes, I'll also note that the council received three email public comments prior to the meeting. And our first oral public comment comes from Joan Lundstrom.
I would like to comment on 1251 South Aliso Drive, the proposed residence for homeless. I have initially supported this, but I was alarmed to read in the IJ that the county staff reported that 50% of this of the residences would be, and I quote, "chronically homeless people who suffer from serious mental illness." This concerns me because this 43 to 50 unit residence for homeless would mean that at least 20 people would be seriously mentally ill. The issue is how to take care of them and that there is enough funds and resources on a sustaining, long-term basis. So I am, I want this, the residence for homeless, but not with this mix. I don't think this mix works there in that those numbers. It is at the beginning of the major residential neighborhood and next to doctors' offices. It is not the right location for that mix. So therefore, and I think it will become a burden for the city of Larkspur. A burden because seriously mentally ill, not only raise a safety to other residents, but also safety to our residents. And I cite that in the IJ, they talk about the Victory Village in Fairfax very recently where the resident said they were, they had safety concerns because there were seriously mentally ill homeless at that residence. And there wasn't enough staff provided. So I would still like to say this could be a homeless residential center, but not this mix and not in those numbers. I think that could be a burden for Larkspur. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Allison, are there other members of the public that would like to provide comment this evening?
I'm sorry, this is Scott. I was hearing, I had a hard time hearing Joan. I don't know if that's something with our system. Something we can work on. I'm still hearing echo.
I'm hearing a lot of feedback also.
I don't. Dan, are there, are you or anybody else getting feedback?
I was hearing the echo as well. It's possible someone has two, two devices logged in, I'm not sure.
I gave.
Yes.
Other members of the public that would like to provide, to provide public comment?
Yes, our next comment will come from caller ending in 1402.
James Holmes, Larkspur. I too would like to address, oh, there is an echo. I'm sorry about that. Address the South Aliso Project Home Key financed homeless shelter. And the IJ article, which was printed a few days later, which I think ought to alarm the council as it alarmed me. When I first heard of this project, I assumed in my naivete that it would include criteria for living there that was appropriate for a facility in a residential and medical area, similar to the criteria applied at the King Street homeless shelter, which received broad community support. But that assumption is inaccurate, according to the IJ article. It says, quote, "County planners estimate about half of the apartments will be used to house people who suffer from, quote, 'serious mental illness,' unquote." A later article in the IJ also refers to serious mental illness as distinguished from other local projects which would have residents with, quote, "some degree of mental illness," unquote. Even more worrisome, the first IJ article states, quote, "Recipients of Project Home Key funds are required to accept tenants regardless of sobriety, participation in services or treatment, history of incarceration, credit history, or history of addiction." In short, the insane, the addicted, and the convicted and evicted. The article does say that support services will be available, but, quote, "primarily during business hours," unquote. And as noted, residents don't have to accept services or treatment to live there. If the IJ article is correct, then this project could be a recipe for catastrophe in a residential neighborhood. Right next door to a Larkspur City Park. This article's information suggests to me that the council should become involved, as has the Kentfield School District, and that the council should make every effort to see that the facility will be operated like the peaceful King Street facility and not be a San Francisco-style source of squalor and disorder on South Aliso.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, are there other members of the public that are in the queue?
Next we'll hear from Joe Santino.
Hi, thank you. I am also calling to voice my concerns of Project Home Key on South Aliso. I have serious misgivings about placing potentially sex offenders and chronically homeless with severe mental and substance abuse issues without any mandated treatment on a safe route to school. When I say it out loud, it sounds ridiculous, but I can't believe this is happening. As the city council, I know you will not be able to vote directly on the project, but you do have influence. And I request that the Larkspur City Council formally oppose the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, who's next?
And we'll hear from Jeff.
Thank you for, can you hear me? Thank you for taking the call. Thank you for doing this. I would like to repeat and reinforce what everyone else has said thus far. This is a recipe for disaster. A lot of this has changed. As, as people have questioned the project and what the project is really about, more information is divulged. And it started off as being a, and it was sold, according to the MarinCounty.org website. It was sold as a shelter for single adults who have experienced homelessness. Now, as people have been asking questions, now you see that they cannot discriminate for who is there. They have a number of people who will be severely disabled with mental health issues, drug and alcohol issues. And I think it is very, very important that this is happening in the city of Larkspur, that the city of Larkspur makes a stand, takes a vote, and takes up this issue and makes a statement to the county that this is not acceptable, especially the way this stands. Again, people who are against this are not against homelessness. They're specifically against the type of homeless that are being introduced here. And no guardrails for the community, no safety and security for the community. This is a foolish choice. And so I think Larkspur needs to do a little research into this and make a statement for the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, who's next?
Next we'll hear from Diana Hedrick.
Hi, thank you very much for your time today. I, as well, am calling in regards to 1251 South Aliso. And I oppose this site location specifically for this Project Home Key. One of, to kind of piggyback off of what everyone else has said, I 100% agree with them. I would like to know who, you know, when something does happen legitimately, who would be responsible for everything that is, that is going on? And I would like to know legitimately, like who, you know, if, if something happens to a senior citizen, if something happens to a child because of the resident or one of the friends of the residence, like, is it the city council of Larkspur who's going to, you know, be responsible? Is it the Board of Supervisors? You know, I really want someone to take responsibility instead of someone saying, oh, well, this is what the state wants. This is what the county wants. My other concern is that this area is unincorporated. And so there's really no representation specifically to kind of push back on this. So again, I do support the individual who said to, they want the board, the Larkspur Board to, you know, officially oppose this. And I know that Kentfield School District has officially opposed it, as well as some other local schools in the area as well. So thank you very much for your time.
Your comments. Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments on items that are not on the agenda this evening?
Next we'll hear from Alicia Albin.
Hi, thank you for your time. I too am here to speak out against Project Home Key at 1251 South Aliso. And similar to the woman who spoke first, I too was supportive of this project when I first heard of it. But given all of the details that have come out, I can no longer support this project and we need your help. Project Home Key was conceived of and its location selected without your input and without the input of the very affected communities nearby. Placing chronically homeless individuals with severe mental health and substance abuse issues on a safe route where nearly 5,000 of our children commute to and from school is not only ill-conceived, but irresponsible. Not only that, the lack of coordination with our law enforcement, fire departments, hospitals, and our school districts will result in the taxation of our public departments, as well as create potential irreversible impacts on our children and schools. These burdens will lie at your feet and we believe that it's time for the city of Larkspur to take a stand. Project Home Key offers no mandatory mental health services and substance abuse services, as you know. In addition, the 50 residents who will reside there can have up to two guests per day and one overnight guest each evening, tripling the level of occupancy of those with potentially unattended severe mental health and substance abuse issues. We've asked for security. We've asked for mental health and addiction services. We've even asked for family housing, but we've told, been told no. I believe that we need real and viable solutions for the unhoused, but this cannot come at the cost of our children, seniors, and residents that live right next door. It's abundantly clear to me that this is the wrong location for this project. I don't speak alone. In just two, two short months, the petition has gathered nearly 2,000 signatures. The ripple effects of doing nothing are larger than just this project. They undermine our faith in democracy and in our local governments to represent us. We trust in you to represent our needs regardless of legislative acts. I implore you to please show your leadership and give, take a position in support of your city and its residents and against this location for Project Home Key. Given that the Board of Supervisors is tentatively scheduled for the 15th of this month, I would also ask that you schedule a special meeting in advance of the 15th to please agendize this matter. We're grateful for your support and leadership. Thank you.
We appreciate your comments. I believe we're going to, I'm going to request a, a report from Councilmember Candell later. During council. If we can get additional information. Allison, are there other members of the public that would like to make comments on items that are not on the agenda this evening?
Yes, our next comment will come from Sarah Santino.
Hi, thank you so much for taking my comment this evening. I would just like to say that I too am very concerned about, about this project. I actually had a lengthy chat with Officer Mike Norton of the, the Chief of Police of the Central Marin Police Authority today. And while he can't express direct opposition to the project, he said it would be okay if I shared his concerns with the community. He said the supervisors have never included him or the police department in the input process when considering this project. And he thinks the following issues could arise. Number one, because this is permanent supportive housing, not transitional housing, where tenants can be evicted for problematic behavior. There will be no recourse for criminal behavior because criminality does not constitute grounds for lease termination. Therefore, it would be extremely difficult to remove individuals from the community who have disruptive menacing behavior. We also now know that the, the project would be in effect for 55 years. Number two, he said the number of guests allowed, including the overnight guests, could be very problematic, quote unquote, because of the number of incidents which might arise. Number three, the Central Marin Police Authority has only 45 sworn officers, unlike San Rafael, which is designed to deal with mental health issues and a population with those particular needs. He anticipates that our area, meaning Greenbray, Corder Madera, and Larkspur, could have up to 60 transients with no additional police funding to manage them. He does not see how the police department will get the support necessary to deal with the situation as there is no additional funding allotted for that. In short, he believes it is set up to fail without any fail-safe in place. I urge you to take a stand against this ill-conceived project. Thank you very much.
Allison, who's next?
Next we'll hear from Drew Emma.
Good evening, councilmembers. How you doing? I also wanted to just bring up something in terms of transparency. I believe maybe a meeting or two ago, Councilman Candell suggested that the town have an open forum to discuss this. I'd also, you know, in terms of Larkspur, suggest you guys take a look at the town of Corder Madera on their website. They have a whole section regarding the home key and are very transparent and open with all the videos, the articles. And as we currently sit here today, there's no mention of this whatsoever on the city of Larkspur's website. I think it would be great to put information up there in terms of providing transparency for the folks that, that live in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments very much. Allison, who's next in the queue?
Next we'll hear from Yas Arrow.
Hi, my name is Yas Arrow and I am a parent of two little girls. And I'm actually calling in to urge our amazing city council to please, please, please oppose the Project Home Key project that is up for discussion. I echo what everybody else has said before. It's ill-conceived and there are no guardrails in place for a potentially really, really negative outcome. I'm not against projects like this. I'm a mental health professional myself and I am abundantly clear. This is not coming from a not in my backyard standpoint, but rather from a common sense and safety point of view. I urge you guys to please, please do what you can to, 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 to turn this project into something a little bit more well thought out. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Another member of the public in the queue?
Next we'll hear from Tom Silva.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers. Thanks for taking my call tonight. Wanted to call in. I'd actually written an email about 1251 South Aliso project back in early December, I think when things were just starting to become known to the, the public. And you guys very, I'm very grateful for your response by email, but it really did just point you back to the website, you know, www.1251southaliso.com, saying that there was going to be a community advisory group to take opinions and things like that. I'm back here tonight really to ask once again that you guys take a stronger stand and a stronger look at this because the community outreach and everything that you've heard tonight about this project, I think points to the fact that it hasn't been planned out. Community involvement has not been solicited. When we do reach out to our Marin County Supervisors, we're told that the decision is largely already made. This is coming directly from Supervisor Rice. I would just ask that you take this information that you're getting tonight, take the feedback that you're hearing from your constituents, and go to the other council members who maybe haven't yet made up their minds and work with them to really see what impact this actually is going to have on the community. And just say no. It's that simple. It's that simple a request. I don't think we need to let this be railroaded into our community in this fashion without some more planning, without some more thought, and certainly not in this location on a safe route to schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, are there other members of the public in the queue?
Our next comment will come from Cam.
Hello, this is Cam Norgate. I'm a parent of two girls in the Larkspur, Green Bay area. Just wanted to call in to express my opposition to the project at 1251. I think everyone has been, been very eloquent around the issues and concerns that we all have around this project. It is really a, a mental health and addiction facility that you're trying to put right in the heart of some both senior and, and young children communities. And so we're obviously very concerned about that and would hope that, that you would reflect the communities wishes and desires and help reflect that up to the chain of, of different people who are making decisions here. So thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, who's next?
Next we'll hear from Tracy G.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm not sure if this is the right time, but I'm just calling in to also just comment and state my opposition to Project Home Key on Aliso. Did I come in at the wrong time or is that okay?
Now is the time for public comment.
Okay. Great. Oh, perfect. And I'm sure this has said, been said already, but I just have some concern about the project and the lack of, I guess, input from the community that we're able to have. I recently read something in the IJ about the demographics. And I've contacted different supervisors regarding opportunities to help select the demographics and haven't heard back yet. But if this project does go through, I just hope that we have some community input in that and that we can at least maybe come to a compromise on elderly or domestic violence victims, especially in that neighborhood. I do have children who go to school nearby and I am concerned about the different, I guess, review factors for those going into this housing project. So thank you so much for your time and hopefully we can hear more from others.
Thank you for your comments. Who's next?
Next we'll hear from Dr. Rittenbach.
Hi, I'm Kirsten Rittenbach. I'm one of many other parents here in the Larkspur, Greenbray area. I have two little girls. Thank you very much for taking our calls today. I also want to echo many of the other eloquent responses about my opposition to the Aliso project. And I implore you as the city council, even though you have also told us by email and other correspondences that you don't have a lot of say in this, that you really listen to your constituents. We're talking to you and we're imploring you to think about the safety of our children, of our elders, of our community, and to come up with a solution that involves the community in this process. And we need to take a stand and we really implore you to, to listen to us. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Allison, who's next?
Next we'll hear from Annie Pupas.
Hi, this is Annie Pupas. I'm a long-term resident of Kentfield. I'm calling opposition of the Project Home Key at 1251 South Aliso. My question for you guys, or my, my ask, I guess, is that I know that you guys don't have control over this project and the standard processes. They don't need a building permit and they don't have to come to get any special use permits. I'm sure by now you guys have enough information that not only the county has shared, but also that ECS has shared on the exact type of population and the lack of screening and mandated services for this chronically high-risk population. Being that this location is so close to our beloved Hal Brown Park, along with various other pathways that extend to, at a minimum, eight schools with over 4,800 kids. I'm asking, and I know our community is asking, and we are coming in strong up fever and opposition to this project and asking that you, as a city council, come out and oppose this project if they cannot control the type of population that's here or provide us with very clear safety guardrails. A lot of us in the community have talked to the police department and they have come out saying that they were not properly, this site was not properly vetted with them. And so we are asking for you guys to use your voice and to represent us and our community and help keep not only the community, but also the children safe. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, who's next?
Thank you. We received a few emailed comments. The first comment comes from Diane Springfield, who had also sent a separate email prior to the meeting. She sent a follow-up with additional newspaper articles she'd like the council to read. Those will be posted to the online agenda packet shortly. This next email came in from Joelle Williams. She writes, "Hi, I am a resident of Greenbray and I am not able to make the meeting tonight. However, I would like to express my concern for the facility proposed to go in at 1251 South Aliso. I would like to express that I would hope that Larkspur City Council could represent the 1,900-plus people that are not supportive of the homeless facility as it stands today. The ability for the police to manage with the increase in crime and the safety concerns that we residents have for children who use the path daily. The county needs to hear from a city council who can speak for the unincorporated residents of Greenbray who do not have a governing body. Thank you for your support of the residents of Green Bay. Sincerely, Joelle Williams." That email will also be posted to the agenda packet shortly. And I'm looking for any additional raised hands. We have one more raised hand from Katie Beta.
Hi, my name is Katie Beta.
Hi, my name is Katie Beta. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name's Katie Beta. I actually live on South Aliso. And I would also like the council to come out publicly against Project Home Key. I understand that your hands are tied because the funding is coming from the state and our state constitution allows for the city to be overridden. The fact that the state can take away your authority to properly manage projects of this or any sort in your backyard is beyond frustrating. So I understand that the only real move you can make at this point is to publicly oppose it. It's not much, but it's something and for a council that's otherwise handcuffed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, do we have any additional public comment this evening?
I'm looking for any additional raised hands or email comment. And there's no further public comment.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, the next item on the end are are any presentations and. Who are the first is a measure B pavement repair program report. Uh, it's the winter twenty twenty-two update from our Public Works Director Julian Skinner. Welcome. Lead it off.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public, Julian Skinner and the Public Works Director for the City of Larksburg. And tonight we have a quick um update on our measure B paving uh program. Find my PowerPoint here. Okay, so quickly tonight, I'm going to go over the progress uh with the measure B program to date, uh go over the costs we've incurred so far. Talk about this past year, twenty twenty-one's projects highlights. Um, look at the projects upcoming this summer, um talk about the impacts, what we've achieved uh with the paving program and then talk about what's uh next. Um, same table I've shown about each of these updates with a updated uh green strike through on the projects that are completed. Moving from left to right through the uh four years that we programmed in the plan. Um, it was a five-year. Uh, paving plan and we uh programmed projects for the first four years and left the fifth year for any projects that got bumped out due to. Conflicts or scheduling um issues. So as you can see um here, most of the projects uh with the green strike through have been uh completed. Uh, the two that are circled in yellow are currently um under development, excuse me. Um, under twenty twenty-one, that S F D project, that's a paving of Sir Francis Drake, that's on your agenda, on your consent agenda tonight to approve the plans. Um, so we can go out to bid with that project. Um, and the project four uh that shows up in the twenty-two uh year will be coming to you. Um, in a month or so uh with those plans to go out to bid um the summer. Here's our map um that shows um all the streets uh that we've completed, the um. Gray, the thin gray streets are um streets that were paved prior to measure B. We did have measure C um that preceded. Uh, this measure. Um, and then the streets that are in a gray bubble. Um, are streets that have been paved with our first three years of the measure B uh program. Um, there's a couple of areas here in yellow. Those are active at the moment. We're paving some streets out in Hillview. Actually, we're putting the storm drains in the street now and we'll be paving those streets when the storm drain work is complete. And then we just started the work kind of in the um bottom left of the screen there, uh downtown on King Street between uh King and Ward. Um, that project's replacing the sidewalks and will uh repair the pavement uh when complete. So what's left for this summer is the streets that you see in orange, um East of Francis Drake, South Aliso, Magnolia. Uh, are the main streets and then um a lot of the residential streets uh south of the downtown. Monte Vista, uh West Baltimore are all scheduled to be uh paved um this summer. I have another slide that'll go into some of the details on what that scheduling. Uh, will look like. And I also want to highlight these purple streets here. These are the ones. Um, that um if everything falls into place would be paved this summer, but there are neighboring projects that need to be completed. Before we pave the street. Um, so there's a potential for these segments that are highlighted in purple here. Um, the north end of Magnolia, some sections of Doerty and Old Redwood Highway that could potentially get bumped to uh the fifth year of our program next summer. Uh, based on the completion of some other projects in the in the area. Uh, this is our pie chart showing um the percentage of streets that we've got paved to date. The the green chunks are the paved and. Uh, the first year twenty nineteen uh and then twenty twenty and twenty-one. Um, as you see, we still have a big chunk of streets to pave this year, and that's mainly because we had to bump um East of Francis Drake from last year to this year. Because of uh permitting issues with um Caltrans. So that's why we still have uh almost ten miles left to to pave. So it's going to be a um a busy summer. Um, this is the um cost matrix that we developed with um all of our streets when we did the five-year plan. The pink column here is the twenty-five point three million, which was our estimated price tag when we did the plan. Um, four years ago, um the next column is uh amounts we've actually spent paving the streets. So that's just over eleven million. Um, and then twelve million is our projected estimate for the remaining streets. And so uh keeping track in the last column is the delta of uh projects that we've underspent or overspent on. And we're currently tracking to land about two million, uh one point eight million under the projected twenty-five point three million. Based on our um estimates to date. Um, so this last year was a group three project, uh just under three miles of streets were paved, uh just under three million uh dollars. Um, and then uh you know, as we've been saying all along, we're not um just covering up the streets. We're doing a full um twenty-year service life pavement improvement on these streets. So here's an example here of. An area um of a street that was failed. And so um you see there's kind of a black mesh here. This is a bad area of the street that we dig out. And completely replace uh down to native uh before we overlay new asphalt on the street. So we're fixing all the streets underneath before we put a new layer of asphalt on them. So we'll get twenty years of of life out of them. Um, here's an example um of rice which wraps around behind City Hall, just kind of a typical before and after. Um, conditioned photo here showing alligatoring and potholes and many, many years of patching of potholes. Um, and then at the right, what we have uh today with all of the underlying issues fixed and then a new layer of asphalt on top. Um, so as I said, we're going to have a busy twenty twenty-two uh paving schedule. Um, here's the individual projects that make up the the twelve million that we plan on spending um this year. Uh, we've already started with our crosswalk um enhancements throughout town. Uh, as I mentioned, Magnolia Avenue is underway. That was budgeted at one point eight. The low bid came in at just over one point three. So another potential uh savings on that project. Um, the next project you'll see is the Rule Twenty-A Undergrounding Project on Doerty. So all of the overhead utilities on Doerty will be undergrounded. Um, and that should start February fourteenth and will last through uh June of this year. Um, and then East of Francis Drake, which as I mentioned is on your agenda tonight to allow us to go out to bid. Uh, scheduled for May through June of this year, that will be night work. It's a a very busy street. And um that will have to be paved at night to minimize uh traffic impacts. Um, and then uh Shady Lane is a small street, but it's been carved out separately because it's a concrete street. Um, and so it's going to be its own project. Um, and then Magnolia Avenue uh will also be its own project just due to the traffic control concerns. Uh, Magnolia, paving Magnolia Avenue is going to be different than paving all of the local streets. So it will be put out as its own project this summer. Uh, scheduled for July and August, because that's when school's out and that's when the traffic is um lightest. So that project is anticipated to have a a sizable traffic impact too. But unlike East of Francis Drake, we can't pave that one at night because of the proximity of all the residences. Uh, so it's going to have to be day work. Um, and that's why we've carved that out uh separately. Uh, it's going to require a lot of traffic control. And then Measure B Group Four is our group of local streets that I showed, Monte Vista, uh West Baltimore. Um, that'll be going out June through September of this year. And then Doerty Drive will be paved um upon the completion of the Rule Twenty-A Undergrounding Project. So that's why it has been carved out also as a separate project because it has to wait for the P G N E project to finish. Um, and then finally, some uh pathway and stairs improvements up on um Elm. So that's the schedule of projects this year as they're uh lining up. And I see there's a hand up, so I can pause here for uh questions.
I just had a a quick question. It it might be naive. Um, under the Magnolia Avenue A D A, the uh the difference between the low bid and the estimated cost. Are those monies available for any upgrades we might identify uh in the near future?
Um, they're they're not currently programmed for anything there. Uh, there is a uh a known potential. Uh, savings in the program by the time we get through all of these projects um in the summer. Um, that hasn't been earmarked for anything. I know we've talked before about um uh storm drains and and things like that. Um, that are are unfunded.
I have a very, I have a very specific question. In the past, there are portions of the the tree canopy along Magnolia in the block between uh Ward and. Um, Kane, I guess, the main blocks of the downtown. And I'd like to know if the A D A product replaces the street trees, so we have a full tree canopy in the main part of the downtown. Or is it currently planned that those trees have not been replaced and we're uh. Anyway, uh question mark.
Yeah, so um the the ADA project as it is um currently out to bid includes some. Minor streetscape enhancements. So uh we did include completing the tree canopy. I believe there's about fourteen new trees uh with tree grates that were selected by the landscape architect uh that are included in the project. Yes.
Can I jump in, Mr. Mayor? I just want to emphasize for the council and the public that we need to be careful. About distinguishing between what's being paid for by Measure B and what's being paid for from other sources. The ADA project is a mix of funding sources. So the Measure B is not paying for some of the amenities that are being done as part of the project. Those are coming from other funding sources. So Measure B is paying for roadwork and sidewalk work. And related underground infrastructure work that is necessary to do the roadwork and sidewalk.
Uh, thank you very much for the information. Uh, please continue. Uh, council member Way, I think, had a question.
Hi, Julian. Um, I'm very familiar with Shady Lane since I hike up there and you said it's a concrete road. Do we have other concrete roads similar to that um that are in to be redone in the next year or two?
Uh, we only have two. Uh, we don't have any complete concrete roads. We had a section of Rich Street that was concrete and also a section. Of, I believe it's Highland Court that's off Orange that is um concrete. Um, and so we did evaluate doing all of the concrete streets together. But um the Highland is actually in good shape and does not need uh to have the concrete replaced. So um that will be a separate process. Um, and then um the work um on Rich uh was. Was deferred um to a later time. That's why it's not included in um Shady Lane um also. But yeah, I if if the idea was to group all of the concrete work together in one project. Um, separated from the asphalt, it just so happened that the other two projects uh were too dissimilar from Shady Lane. That's why it's a standalone.
And do we have any environmental mitigation for the owl habitat that's up there that will inhibit us? I see signage about owls when I'm up there.
Yeah, there's a um, there is a um. A time restriction and I don't recall the date off the top of my head. I want to say it's August first or August fifteenth. Um, that we have to wait for uh in a couple of uh neighborhoods uh before we do work. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next slide. This is uh just some shots of the work um out on Magnolia, pretty typical of uh what you'll see throughout the project. They're um working on the west side from south to north. Um, and then they'll complete the north side, sorry, the west side, and then they'll flop over and work on um the east side. So this is a complete removal um of all of the the concrete. And they'll do all the concrete work, the sidewalk first, and then they'll come back and pave um after. And this is to make all the sidewalk ADA compliant. And that's so all of its uh slopes basically are flatter uh to meet the standards. And so that project, uh as I mentioned, started um on the twenty-fourth. Uh, it's been going for a week and a half. And um it's always tough working um in the winter and working in a environment where there's um lots of things under the sidewalk. When you rip the sidewalk up that you have to deal with. But um the schedule, if everything goes according to plan, is to be out there through the end of March. Um, so if we run into some unforeseen issues when we dig the sidewalk up or if we get uh, you know, some more rain at some point. Um, that date will likely slip. Um, but as it is now, the contractor's schedule has him finishing up at the end of March.
And then this is uh the main work area.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Julian. Just a a quick question. Uh, and maybe I missed it if you said something about this. Uh, are there parklets that are still in place implicated so far or planned to be implicated? Um, in the foreseeable future, in terms of being removed?
So there were two parklets that were physically within the footprint of the work. Um, they were both uh have both been removed now. So they're not interrupting with any of the work. There are two parklets that are in close proximity to the projects. Um, that we identified. Um, but to date, the contractor uh has not let us know of any issues uh with those parklets. Uh, that are close to the workspace. So um at the moment, we don't anticipate uh having to remove any other parklets to accommodate the work.
And can you, can you just let us know if if you can, um, what what are the businesses? That are affected by the removal of their associated parklets?
The two parklets that were removed, uh one was Mag's Yogurt and the other was Ruley's.
Ruley's, okay. That's that's really, that's what I thought. Okay, good thinking.
Okay, I'll move on to the slide. So this is showing the limits of where the work will take place for the Doerty Drive Rule Twenty-A project. Um, so essentially anywhere there's overhead utilities on Doerty, they will be undergrounded. Um, so the first step is to excavate the street and lay all the conduits in the ground and then pull all the new wires. And then when that's all done and the trenches are repaved, they'll come back and start taking down the poles um and the wires. There's two distinct locations here. One um is near the entrance to Redwood High School at Lucky Drive. There's a series of poles there before you get to Riviera Circle. And then again, there's another line of poles from uh Hall Middle School up to uh Magnolia. So both of those areas um will be uh undergrounded with this project. Um, and that project is um, as I said, scheduled to start um in February uh fourteenth and projected to last through uh June. And then I wanted to share this. This is um information that M T C puts out. They monitor all of the pavement conditions throughout the Bay Area. Um, and they um have a report every year. Or where they list that P C I score, the zero to one hundred for every agency. And as you recall, there was a time when we were the very bottom um agency on that list. Uh, we are no more. Um, they report a three-year average of P C I, so it's not a true snapshot of what our streets look like, but it's a blended average over the last three years. Um, and so uh they're reporting for Larksburg that we're at a fifty-nine. Um, that's our uh reported P C I. Um, and we're um actually called out in the M T C report and the text and the press release. So we're singled out as uh making great progress. Um, on our streets. Um, our progress is actually much better than that because our raw score for our streets are actually at a seventy-six today. Uh, so citywide, our average pavement score is a is a seventy-six. And you'll see that M T C score will catch up to the actual score in a few years. Um, once we've uh completed our program. Um, so this is the um the graph that M T C will show. The blue line is the city streets. Um, and how they've come up over the last few years from dipping down into the forties. Um, and now we're at that fifty-nine per M T C. The orange line across the top is. And now we're at that fifty-nine per MTC. The orange line across the top is the average for Marin County. Uh, but this is our dashboard. This is Larkspur specific. This is real moment in time, and so that same graph at the top here. Um, you can see on the far left was at a forty-three in twenty sixteen. Um, and today we're at a seventy-six is our pavement condition index and there's other other facts. And numbers in here too, but the. The, again, the PCI score is is again, it's not just a number, it's an indication of the health of our streets and the fact that it's. Going to make it sustainable to maintain them in the future.
At the Transportation Authority Marin meeting, uh, we were identified as most improved in the county. Usually that. Annual announcement is made by Mill Valley, so we'll see if Dick Spotswood gives us the credit due here. And congratulations to you and your team.
So here's kind of what we're looking at next. I did give you a big list of of projects that we're looking at doing this summer in twenty twenty-two. And as I mentioned, there may be some streets that spill over in the twenty-three. Uh, but other than that, that's that's the last of our Measure B paving program, the last big chunk of our streets. And then we're going to be focusing on maintaining that investment. As we've said all along. Uh, we're not just doing this to to get rid of the potholes and make it a better driving experience, but we're also doing this to reduce our. Uh, ongoing maintenance costs, but we think we can get down to about a million dollars a year moving forward to keep the streets in this great condition. And so we'll be looking at other things. We'll be having some presentations in the coming months. As we look at what we're going to be doing pavement management wise moving forward, it's going to involve some. Crack sealing and some micro-surfacing and slurry seal and we'll. Uh, be out in the community and explain to everybody exactly what those mean and 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 why they do them, but they're treatments that we haven't been able to do for a while because our streets have been. So bad, but we'll be able to do some of those treatments moving forward. And then, um, you know, also to keep our streets in great condition, we're going to have to make sure that we address some of the concerns we have with our storm drains. The photo on the left is pretty straightforward. This is somebody doing some crack sealing, which is one of the early maintenances you do on a street. To try and prevent the water from getting in and making the street worse. On the right here, um, as you can see on Magnolia, that is not an excavation. That is a hole that actually existed below the street. And so this was a section of storm drain that had failed. And a tire actually went through the pavement and reduced, revealed a little hole and. Uh, when we looked at it closer, it was a pretty big hole. Um, and so fortunately, we were able to get in there and repair it before there was any. Any damage, but this is, uh, you know, a lot of our storm drains are are out of sight, so we've got a big effort underway now to. Uh, video inspect our storm drains and try and identify. Um, and get in and repair some of those storm drains before we have them turn it turn into sinkholes like we saw on Magnolia. So that's the end of the presentation. I'm available for any further questions.
Are there members of the council that have questions for Julian? That was a great presentation, Julian. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, uh, Councilmember Way and then Vice Mayor Paulson.
Julian, I just have two questions. The first is, um, how well are homeowners doing with preparing in advance? For doing any type of cutting into the pavement for either lateral drain replacement or other types of things? Are they still paying attention to that and we're still getting cooperation?
Um, yeah, I would say for the most part, uh, we see a a rush on lateral permits. Uh, in the months before we do the paving project and there's some streets. I think where some of the neighbors have gotten together and hired a contractor and got a better price by working together and having one contractor do four or five. Service laterals. Um, so yeah, for the most part, folks are getting out ahead of. Um, ahead of that and not having to dig the street up after the fact.
Great. And then lastly, although this is not part of the paving project, as I drove over the Bon Air Bridge today, is that power line that's suspended? There across the creek, is that being underground?
It goes in the bridge. Actually, once the bridge is completed, it gets rerouted inside the bridge. There's a conduit for it.
Wonderful.
So it will go away when the bridge is completed, yes.
Great, I thought so, but yes, it's very unesthetic and I was just wondering if it if it's going away. Okay, great.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, a comment and a question. You know, first, Julian, I I really wanted to appreciate, uh, express my appreciation for. Just the listing here, you know, we see a lot about the Bon Air Bridge at twenty-five million. This is about half the budget and it seems like there are just. Many infrastructure things to fix and I'm especially heartened by the, you know, the video scoping and, you know, seeing that sinkhole, it just reminds me that we have a. A huge unfunded liability there and I'm I'm very glad to see that you're looking at that. Um, the question is, you know, with the. The federal grants coming, you know, uh, for infrastructure help. Uh, I I don't know if I missed this part of the presentation, but do you see any openings for, you know, this work or other work, you know, getting some federal money here?
Uh, we're just starting to weed through the paperwork on the grant requirements. Now, but the early indications were that storm drains were one of the eligible expenses for infrastructure. For the federal infrastructure money, yes.
Thank you.
I think, uh, city manager's been a little bit more in involved in some of those processes, uh, you may want to add.
Yeah, it just, I I'll put it in perspective, the final. Guidelines were published by the federal government for the new infrastructure bill. It's three hundred and some odd pages, so. In fairness to Julian's staff, it's it's going to take a while to slog through. Everything and identify what we're eligible for, uh, but we'll do that well in time to meet any application deadlines. I also anticipate there'll be some discussion about Marin attempting to. Work collectively to pursue some of the money on projects that benefit. The region as a whole, and that might make us a little more competitive. My only word of caution on banking on that particular pot of money is. Because of the disaster in Pennsylvania. Bridges are going to be highly. Ranked and the federal government already paid to fix the bridges in Larkspur, so we may not be. The best candidate for this round in that respect.
Other questions from the council? Are there members of the public that have questions or comments on the report this evening?
A first comment will come from James Holmes.
Of James Holmes, Larkspur. Uh, I might add Coleman. Street to the list of concrete streets. I believe the asphalt that has spalled off shows an old concrete. Street under Coleman. Thank you.
I'm looking for any additional raised hands or emailed comments. And there's no further public comment.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, the next presentation this evening is an update from the Commons Foundation.
Hi, Joe. Hey, everyone. Uh, it's Joe Jennings, the president of the Commons Foundation. We just have a brief update. I know you've got a lot on your plate. Just so to keep you up to date with what's going on, we're. As you know, um, a partner of the city to raise five million dollars for phase one of the new library at the Commons, Rose Lane and Doherty Drive. And with over the last three years gained a fairly broad set of endorsements. Just a quick update is we have two point six million in cash and pledges, which is fifty-three percent of our goal. We've launched two sets of challenges that are matching donors' contributions of pledges and cash. Which is in the last five weeks raised two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. And because the state deadline for the grant for matching a grant application. Deadline is moved out a month. It gives us a little more runway to get more cash in before. You all have to file a grant. What this means to the public is people who donate right now could get their donation increased by four times. We have a local match for donors over a thousand dollars. And then that could then be matched additionally by the state, so this is great news. What it looks like is we ended December of twenty twenty with twenty-five thousand dollars in cash and about a million and a quarter in pledges. And we've flipped that around to where we have, we ended twenty twenty-one December. With one point five billion in cash and another close to a million in pledges. Since December thirty-first, we're approaching now almost two million in cash. And, um, to be honest with you, in many ways, the city has driven this chart. Because since May, June of last year. The city council and the city manager have gone through a series of public discussions. Which frankly took the risk out of giving money to the commons and has built a considerable groundswell of support. For helping the city build the new library, so I wanted you to know that your actions actually have big, big. Outcomes for us in fundraising. Just to remind the public, there's a state matching grant program of approximately four hundred million dollars. There's a grant application deadline. It's moved out a month now to mid-March. There's no guarantee that we'll get funds, but the city is working hard on an application and we expect that. Our funds will be part of what the city submits as a proposal to the state. The two community matches that we have, one is for donors under forty-nine thousand dollars. Nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. It's for cash or pledges due within two years. It's a one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar challenge. Thirty-one thousand, which was matched in May, January already, so ninety-five thousand remains. The key sponsors for this are former council member Larry Chu, Catherine and Brendan Green and. The Works for Library Foundation who generously put up a hundred thousand dollars of this. So when you see the Library Foundation, folks, would you thank them for the city? And then, uh, the LB Challenge is a dollar for dollar match for donors giving over fifty thousand dollars. And the cash and pledges we expect to come in over the next two years, it's a million dollars of a of a. Commitment. And it was done by Lori Lerner and Terry Burkmeyer, Larkspur residents, who are just amazing people. And since we announced it in December, it's raised a quarter of a million dollars and seven hundred and fifty thousand remains. The reason I'm telling you all this is when we announce these things, we've had a sudden flurry of media coverage. In the Independent Journal and Marin Scope and other publications. Um, and this is great momentum for us. Next week, we will be mailing a community mailer. It's going to forty-five hundred residents of Larkspur. Green Break, Kentfield and Ross. And, um, this is the part of the broad community rollout. And we expect to follow this up with additional ways of direct mail in sort of ninety-day waves going it through November. So the potential here is we're at two point six million. And we have eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in challenge money yet to be matched. If it's matched, that's another one point seven million in upside, which would put us at around four point three million. So with the programs in place today, if we execute. We should be closing in on five million later this year. And I need to tell you, the truth is, the public is investing in the city. The city's actions have reduced risk, generated excitement, um, and so I have to thank you for your leadership. Both on the council and with the city manager for moving us this far this quickly. I also want to thank, uh, the Marin Independent Journal actually paid. For our ad to run in their publication, which was wonderful and this was as Catherine Way actually recommended that we contact them. So thank you, Catherine. We want to thank Terry and Lori for their amazing support of this project. The Friends of the Library, the city itself, people forget the city put a hundred and fifty thousand into this. And we don't ever forget that and the Works for Library Foundation and their recent hundred thousand dollar commitment. So we want to thank all of you. So just to remind everybody, we're halfway there. We have the means of closing in on the five million with the challenge programs. And if people put money in in the next thirty to sixty days. Those gifts could get doubled by local matches and doubled again by the state patch, but that remains to be seen. If you have any desire for further information, you can get it at our website or you can email myself or Serena Darcy Fisher, our head of development. That was it.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from council members or comments? Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Joe. Excellent work. I'm beginning to see the progress and the light shining on a new library, so. I really appreciate the hard work you're doing. I I appreciated being invited to your. Foundation meeting on Monday just to see how much enthusiasm you have on your leadership team there, so. You're doing a lot of heavy, heavy work for the community. Even though you reside somewhere else these days, you still have roots and feet in Larkspur, so thank you. I'm looking forward to seeing how this next wave really increases the exposure to a greater level of the community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's very important work and we really appreciate everything that you've done, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Uh, the next. The season is our consent calendar. Um, are there any items on the consent calendar this evening that members of the city council would like to remove for further discussion? Uh, seeing none other members of the public that would like to. Pull out items from the consent calendar for questions or comment.
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members or any email comments. And there's no public comment.
All right. I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar. Some of. A motion from Vice Mayor Paulson, is there a second?
A second, uh, Councilmember Harof.
Let's remember Harof seconds. Allison, would you please call the roll with a vote?
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson?
Yes.
Mayor Hillmore.
Uh, yes. Uh, the motion passes. Thank you very much. The next item on this evening's agenda is the city manager's oral report. Good evening, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, I have one item I wanted to highlight this evening. Tomorrow. Is the first official meeting of the. Housing Steering Committee, Housing Element Steering Committee, and. We scheduled it during the day due to conflicts that folks have in their calendars. It's at eleven thirty. Uh, it's a Zoom meeting. It's a more of a housekeeping meeting, but I think the exciting thing I want to share with the. Public is that among the housekeeping items is we'll be launching the dedicated website for the housing element process. And that link will be posted to our website after the launch. And we encourage folks to go there. They'll be able to sign up so they can get updates about the housing element process as we're going through it. They'll also be able to, uh, look at some interactive tools that we're developing with our consultants. That allow folks to. Actually see the sites that are under consideration for intensification for housing purposes or repurposing for housing purposes. Or development for housing purposes and. As we evolve the website, there's actually been an interactive tool that will allow folks. that will allow folks to tell us where they think housing ought to go. So strongly encourage folks, if you can, attend the midday tomorrow and maybe bring your lunch and watch a Zoom meeting of the Housing Steering Committee. Otherwise, please look out for the formal announcement and launch of the website and get involved. You know, this is about the future of Larkspur. So now I turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council for the city manager regarding his report this evening? And members of the public?
Can you just remind me who's on the steering committee?
It's council members Paulson and Hara.
Are there members of the public that would have questions or comments for the city manager on his report this evening?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members or email comments. And there is no public comment.
Thank you very much. The next item on this evening's agenda are council members' reports and comments. Are there any reports from the city council members this evening? Councilmember Candell and then Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted you to report briefly on the Project Home Key, just to give the council a refresher. I am on the subcommittee, also on the advisory board. I've spoken to Sheriff Mike Norton about this, Police Chief Mike Norton. I've spoken to Katie Rice. I've spoken to the Project Home Key people, the Episcopal people, just about everybody that I could and our constituents. So the summary of my thoughts is that this project was very well-intentioned. It was done to help a homeless population in Marin. And a building was found that seemed like a good building, good bones, good structure. And they said, this is a great fit. Let's do it. And let's apply for the grant. And then they looked into it afterwards. And I think since then, a lot of things have come up that, you know, we have a petition now with 1,900 people signing, saying that there are some problems that I'd like to bring to the council's attention. The first thing that has come up is that this may not be a good fit for the new residents, and we may be setting them up for failure. In the sense, again, this is from a conversation with Mike Norton. In order for a project like this to succeed, there has to be good buses and public transport. There has to be shopping, you know, close by stores, food stores that, you know, the thought of this population walking down to Molly Stone's is probably not a reality. And it's going to be very difficult for people put in this position to succeed.
Scott, I don't mean to, I don't want to interrupt, but Dan, are we stepping into territory where we should have an agendized an item before we have further discussion? I just don't want to get us into a discussion where we haven't properly agendized it.
I appreciate those comments. Scott, would you like to request this to be agendized for an upcoming meeting?
Yeah, there's actually a couple of requests that I have. One is I would like to get this agendized so that there were none of people who suggested that the city council take a position one way or another so that we can represent our constituents. I think that was a good suggestion. So I'd like it to be agendized for that purpose.
But I also want to respect the fact that I requested you to give a report to the council as one of the liaisons. Catherine, you also have the opportunity to make observations if you want to without, I believe, stepping into any sort of problem with, without objection of the city manager.
I, okay.
I think the city attorney unmuted himself. He probably had something to say.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to make sure we're not crossing a line. And I know Sky just unmuted, so.
So under the Brown Act, it's fine for Scott to provide a brief report based on the activities of the ad hoc committee. There's an opportunity for the council, other council members to ask brief questions, but discussion beyond that would require it being agendized.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, Scott. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
No worries. And I'm happy to try, try two things, a couple of things moving forward. First, I'm going to ask the agenda so that we can discuss and potentially take a position on this. The second is there was one of the public comments who had said that this is agendized for the Board of Supervisors on February 15th, which is before our next meeting. So I would throw out there that if we wanted to have a meeting in between now and our next meeting, I would be in favor of that. I know it's unusual. And I would defer to the rest of the council if that's something that we wanted to do. The third thing I just wanted to throw out there is while we don't have any potential power, I wanted to ask Sky his thought of any potential litigation regarding this in the sense that one of these speakers mentioned who's going to take responsibility if there's a problem. So if, for example, the county, if we take a position and tell the county, hey, listen, we've looked into this and we foresee some specific problems. And if you force this down our throats, then in a sense, it may reach a standard of gross negligence. If we are explaining the problems, they ignore those problems, those problems happen. Is it possible for those problems now to land on the county's lap and take responsibility for any damages caused by the problems?
Is that a question for the city manager?
Yeah, and if it's convoluted, and actually for city attorney, and if it's, or the city manager, whoever wants to dig it, but.
I would suggest that if the council is going to agendize this, that that's a fairly substantive question that ought to be part of the item that the. My suggestion, Mr. Mayor, is that if there are members of the council who join Councilmember Candell and requesting an agenda item in a special meeting, that all the council members can send us whatever questions they want to make sure the accompanying staff report includes responses to, and we can take care of it that way.
I was going to say, make the same suggestion that if this is agendized, it would probably be more thorough to address questions about liability related to this proposed use as part of that agenda item than for me to extemporize tonight. Though I could, I could briefly outline it, but you'll get a better answer if it's part of an agendized discussion.
Okay. Given the number of public comments we received this evening, I would be, I would be happy to be the second person requesting this to be agendized. So Mr. City Manager, does that qualify us to put it on an agendized special meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's our longstanding practice that if two council members request an agenda item, we will place it on an agenda. My suggestion is that we will ask the city clerk after this meeting to poll the council about your availability next week for a special meeting. I think it would be appropriate to notify the county that we're going to have the meeting. And also, not just the county staff, but Supervisor Rice, since in her district, will notify her that the meeting's taking place so that if the county wants to come and speak, they can. And of course, you know, there's a limitation to your staff's ability to speak to the nuances and specific issues surrounding Project Home Key and its funding. So it'd probably be helpful to have someone from the county who's familiar with all of the rules and regulations of that program.
And I think it's also important, and I recognize Councilmember Harof as a question. I would like the city manager to clarify the purpose, which is to, if we want to take a position and then any follow-up actions we may want to consider. Councilmember Harof, did you have a question?
I did. And I think our city manager answered, answered one of them. But along those lines, well, first, the first question that I had was for Scott. Do we have any information about, although the county is planning to agendize this matter at their upcoming Board of Supervisors meeting? Do we know what, whether that's an action item, whether that's an informational item? Or what's the scope of the discussion that's anticipated at the Board of Supervisors meeting, if you know?
I don't want to take it away from Councilmember Candell.
Go ahead, tell yours.
So as I understand it, the Board of Supervisors has to take an affirmative vote to accept the state's offer of funding. And so you heard the speaker who asked you to hold the special meeting say it's tentatively scheduled for February 15. And I think the tentative is because the county's been waiting to be told that they're getting an offer letter. So then that offer letter goes on the agenda and the board has to vote to accept or reject the offer. If they accept the offer, then the project is funded and it moves forward. If they reject the offer, then the project's not funded and it would end.
Okay, so that, that answers my question. They're waiting on something from the state that will trigger a decision about the scope of what they talk about on the 15th.
It's called, it's called a notice of financial reward. So that's what they're waiting for.
So, so that's important to know because that is, there is a, there is a specific action that the board would be taking with respect to this project potentially on February 15th. So I think that reinforces the need to have a special, special meeting. And we could discuss at that special meeting, depending on when it's, when it's calendared. I would suggest consideration of, of adoption, potential adoption of a resolution. And when we get to the point of having it agendized for us, consideration of having a draft resolution prepared for that purpose. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, I will have to probably convene with your liaison team outside this meeting so we don't drift away and into the Brown Act now. Because I don't feel we should have a substantive conversation about the resolution. But I really don't have the ability to project what belongs in that resolution. So I think it would probably be appropriate that I work with your liaisons and they can guide me what they think should or shouldn't be in any sort of.
It wasn't my suggestion to have this meeting provide you with direction on the content of a resolution. It was only a suggestion that the format of communications that will be made to express whatever views we adopt at the special meeting, be ready to go when we have that meeting, given the short timeframe that we have before the 15th.
I would take your comments as your own comments and direction to.
Yes, no, absolutely.
So I will leave it to the city manager and the liaisons and staff to certainly ask me if I can help them in any way. But I'll look for them to develop the next steps. Mr. City Manager?
I think I have sufficient understanding of the direction, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. The next items this evening on the agenda are public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if any of the other council members had anything else to report on.
I apologize. Vice Mayor Paulson?
I think Councilmember Way was ahead of me, but I'm happy to go.
All right. Go up and then Dan. I'm very sorry.
All right. Either way, I just wanted to report to my council colleagues that I attended the North Bay League of California Cities meeting on the 26th. And I think some important things were discussed since it was the first meeting of our North Bay colleagues. The first thing was that they talked about the priorities of Cal Cities for the upcoming year. And the president of Cal Cities spoke, who's the new president, Cindy Silva, who is a council member from the city of Walnut Creek. And she presented for about a half an hour, which I thought was a really good opportunity. The priorities of the Cal Cities are four in the upcoming year, which is housing policies, looking at critical infrastructure, homelessness and the ability to assist the homeless, and enhancing disaster preparedness, resiliency, and particularly in regards to climate change impacts. So that's sort of the policy focus that the league is going to have in the year ahead. There was also a representative, one of the lobbyists for the league whose looks at ballot measures, which are up and coming and will be approved. And the particular one that the league is worried, is concerned about is the California Business Roundtables Initiative. They have a board of, the league has a board of over 26 members, and they unanimously opposed this initiative. And so I'll find out more about it as it comes along, but it is called a Taxpayer Protection Act. But the League of Cities is really concerned that it's going to limit state and local ability to collect taxes and fees. That's something the league is paying a lot of attention to. And the other is ACA 7, which is another land use initiative. There's a lot of land use initiatives coming out that the league is paying attention to. And as your CCMC reps from Larkspur, I'll also be looking at these things. And then lastly, they talked about referendum measures that have already qualified for the ballot. And if there's some really interesting ones that are going to be competing measures that have already qualified in regards to gambling and sports betting. Now, that doesn't necessarily apply to Larkspur, but it will create a very lengthy and confusing ballot is what the discussion is in regards to what Indian Gaming will be allowing and asking for and what other sports betting organizations and corporations are going to try to get. There is also plastic waste, which will affect us as far as being able to create ordinances in regards to plastic waste. And then tobacco was the other one that qualified. There's a lot of things that haven't qualified yet. But I found it fascinating that we are going to be seeing a very crowded ballot this upcoming election cycle. So, and they said goodbye, thank you to Eli Beckman for being our North Bay representative from, president from last year, which was nice to see Eli, our council member from Corta Madera. That's my report, and I'll follow up on these as we come along.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to report on a, you know, different topic, which is Measure A. I, you know, this kind of got on my radar because I'm really trying to stay focused on fire safety and disaster preparedness, you know, with the NRGs and the MWPA. In short, I've talked to a lot of people at MWPA, fire professionals, the director of parks for the county and some of the supervisors. Three points I thought are really worth mentioning to the council. One is that that Measure A is sort of seen as a parks measure, but it does have some funding for fire prevention, for vegetation management. And I think one of the rebuttals I'm hearing is that Measure C should cover everything. Why do we need to use Measure A money for fire prevention? And it, you know, seems that that's a little bit uninformed, you know, given that we have about 3,800 homes that border county space and are completely uncovered by anything Measure C does. So to, you know, build out defensible space, there's literally thousands of acres that need to be tended to. And it typical costs is about $4,000 an acre to do the clearing. The other, the second misperception is that fire prevention will take away from the park money. The way this thing is set up is about 65% of the 13 to 15 million every year go to parks and open space. And there's been a commitment to use a quarter of that for fire prevention. And it doesn't take away from the parks. The $90,000 that Larkspur got and we've been using for the parks does not go down. But, you know, we, you know, still have that as another thing. And then finally, there was a community survey and 78% of the respondents said that they really want to see more of Measure A money. It's highly important to them to move it to fire prevention. And I think the rebuttal there is that they're, you know, they're, you know, basically reacting out of fear and they don't understand Measure C. And I don't find that true either. So essentially, I just wanted the council to know the first. So essentially I just wanted the council to know the first reading is coming up on Tuesday. For the Board of Supervisors, the draft ordinance is public. Um, I have a copy, you know, I'm, I'm happy to distribute and I've started looking at the language, making sure that. You know, all the original objectives are met, but that we also deal with the, uh, you know, growing. Problems of vegetation management and cata- catastrophic wildfires. Um, so that's my report. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Are there other councilmember reports this evening or comments, uh, councilmember Harrah?
Just very. Just very briefly, uh, since, uh, councilmember Way mentioned it earlier in the meeting. Um, we did have a, um, chamber of commerce meeting this morning. It wasn't an ordinary one. It was a, it was a kind of an annual, um, get together to discuss various things and Catherine. Mostly financial, uh, things, taking a review of how well things, um. Went last year and what, what revenues are expected, things of that sort. And Catherine was very gracious to, uh, to join us at that, that part of the meeting. Um, I lingered on to participate in a further conversation with other members of the chamber. To discuss kind of strategic initiatives that the chamber wants to, uh, to, um. Proceed with over the course of the year to enhance revenues, uh, expand membership. Um, and, um, and also expand, uh, programming. We talked about a number of those things during the course of the meeting. It's all very preliminary, um, but I just wanted to. Uh, make sure that you all were aware of that going on and, uh, we're looking forward to. Uh, if COVID allows it, uh, an exciting year with, uh, the Chamber of Commerce. That's it.
Thank you very much. Uh, any other councilmember reports or comments this evening? Uh, seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, business items. Uh, we have a public workshop this evening, this evening on city financial matters. Uh, it's in two parts. First is a mid-year budget adjustment discussion. And second is a use of one-time money. And I'll ask for a staff report, uh, Mr. City Manager.
I'm having. Okay. Sorry, my system froze up. I'm trying to get it to work now. Hopefully you're seeing the, the slide presentation. Yeah, okay. So I'm back and working. Uh, as the mayor indicated, this is a two-part presentation. It's intended to be the. The overview, uh, in preparation for the more detailed mid-year budget discussion that will occur at your February sixteenth meeting. Um, I have to admit, I'm kind of glad we've moved that other topic to a special meeting because, uh. We'll probably need some time to get through the mid-year budget adjustments, uh, at your February sixteen regular meeting. But I thought it'd be helpful, uh, here on the second to give you an overview of what we're, uh, thinking so that. You can ask general questions today and you can start to think about your specific questions that you want to raise or address, um, on the sixteenth. So I'll dive right in. And I should note that, uh, administrative services director Kathy Arm is online with me and can answer specific. Uh, financial questions as we go through this. So first. So for this, uh, presentation, I'll do a very, very brief revenue update and then I will focus on the mid-year adjustments and then the use of one-time money. So revenue update. The, uh, it's a positive picture, all, all things considered. Uh, we're still recovering. From the pandemic's impact on our finances. But the picture continues to be better than we could have hoped. Sales tax and property tax appear to be in line with the projections, maybe even a little better. Than the projections we gave you that informed the adopted budget. And the, that's a great sign that the economy in Marin has remained strong and will continue. To grow back to pre-pandemic levels. The, it really exciting thing for Kathy and me as budget logs is that, uh, the transfer tax is. Uh, one of our revenues that's doing far better than expected. I'm highlighting that because that means a lot of property has been changing hands. And as property changes, he has it gets reassessed and, um. We are, uh, waiting for the, uh, final projection later this fiscal year from the assessor. But right now the assessor is indicating that Larkspur is going to enjoy a bump upward in property tax. And that's in heavily because properties are turning over and being reassessed at, at today's market values. Uh, the other, uh, revenue stream that we're seeing better than expected performance is the transient occupancy tax. So that tells us that the courtyard. The Marriott, Marriott courtyard out in Larkspur Landing is doing better than expected and rebounding. Um, it's not anywhere near the pre-pandemic levels, but it's outperforming our estimate and projection that was in your budget. So what's, uh, our conclusion at this time is that the adopted budget, which included a deficit. Uh, we think that these revenue trends suggest that the half a million dollar adopted deficit will be offset. Uh, that's good news. Uh, the difficult news is we do think there's some spending we need to do that will. Probably have to come out of reserves because, um, we're not going to fully offset, uh, everything we want to accomplish. So with that revenue update, I'll move into the discussion of the things we are thinking mid-year need to be adjusted in the budget. A lot of it's about staffing. We've been running at pretty low levels. We've made, you, you may recall in the. Public who've been observing our meetings or recall, um, we incentivized retirements when the pandemic hit. And created vacancies and we use those vacancies to help ride out the impact of the pandemic. Some of those vacancies were in, uh, the enterprise fund that we used to operate for childcare, uh, but some of them were in the general fund. Um, and in particular, community services has been running below staffing levels that we need to accomplish everything we'd like to. Uh, and the service levels that folks are asking for. So, uh, that's our first goal. We need to start restoring those staffing levels if we're going to meet the demand and expectations that we're experiencing. We also are adjusting our staff roles to new technology. So we're trying to run as lean as new technology will allow us. Uh, the most significant of these is the, uh, launch toward the end of this fiscal year of our new. Land management software. So that's for software that planning and building use to engage the public in issue permits. I've been part of that process behind the scenes as we're testing the software and getting it ready. And I think folks who are engaged in, uh, projects, uh, including homeowners who are doing remodels, they're going to love this change. Um, they'll be able to go online, find out exactly where their, their permit is, who's reviewing what. What they still need to turn in. And the general public have the ability to get a sense of what projects are anticipated. Because of permit applications, uh, what projects are anticipated in their neighborhoods. So I think, uh, huge. Benefit in public information and, and also service. Um, we need to do more succession planning in our organization and the experience we've been having in our community development department underscores that. For better, for worse, we had, uh, our director in that area and, uh, the number two person. Both on the same general retirement curve. So, uh, our senior planner is still with us, but, uh, she's said that, uh. That she'll be, uh, figuring out her retirement in the near future and, um. So we didn't really have the best succession planning in that department and it's really alarmed us particularly as we see that, um. The public sector is going through a tough period where we're thinner overall in our ranks and. There's not a lot of enthusiasm for, uh, being in, in the line of sight, uh, so to speak, in the public right now. Um, you know, folks, uh, folks can be pretty assertive with us these days. So, uh, that's challenging. So those three points are informing a lot of the staffing recommendations that I want to bring you as part of the mid-year budget. Now I thought I'd go department by department and tell you where things stand. So community services is foremost in my mind, uh, because public demand, uh. I'd actually in some ways say it's grown past pre-pandemic, particularly in the library right now. Folks really want access to services. Um, and as, as we transition to whatever the new world order of health and safety are. Um, people who are more comfortable. Being out and about and engaged with other members of the community are asking when we're going to restore programming. Um, and actually have in-person offerings. So, um, to that end. Uh, here's why our current setup is, we have the director, we have the recently approved assistant director position. So two management personnel run the community services department. Uh, and our goal is always have those two individuals be such that one is a professional from one discipline and the others from the other discipline. Uh, we're right now, we have two librarians in addition to our director. We have, uh, we're, we have a. Funded community services assistant position. We're actually recruiting and doing interviews, uh, this week for that position. And then we have another part timers. These staffing levels are not allowing us to meet the public demand for service. So, uh, you've approved that your last meeting and we're making the adjustments now in our staffing and about to. Do a big push to fill another librarian position. Uh, but we're accomplishing that right now by leaving our circulation supervisor position vacant. Um, and we'll be assigning the supervisory responsibilities to a librarian instead for the time being. Uh, we think this gets us. More quickly toward, uh, providing the breadth of service that we need to, to the public. Uh, it's a short-term solution, uh, while we continue to prepare for a full staffing contingent. Um, both for the library in its current location and the library in its future location. We gave you some pretty high estimates at your last meeting. Uh, those estimates were based on. Uh, what if we hired somebody at the most expensive cost available? And what Kathy then does for me is she actually runs the true numbers of what it was costing. To have a particular staff person and then we run, uh. A projection based on our modeling experience of what we think the replacement person will be. So we think that the increase of. In, in, uh, the authorized, uh, assistant director position and the new librarian position. Is more in the scale of twenty to thirty thousand dollars when it's, you know, all shakeout. I'm still providing that, that variance because I need to wait and see what the new individuals. Personal choices are in terms of benefits before I'd be able to have a final number. That's much lower than when we were using the broader projection of. What if we hire a new librarian and the most expensive employee possible as a librarian? So I think this is a more realistic projection. I think to continue to grow where we need to be both to staff the current facility correctly and to be able to transition to the new facility. We're probably going to need in the future to add one to two more regular positions. And I'll be working with, uh, frankly, Escobedo, the community services director to get a sense of exactly what those job titles and specifications are. And then recreation, maybe looking at some sort of part-time program coordinator. His focus is on the summer. Uh, you know, we run, uh, super cool summer school and. Although we've changed that model and we probably will never run it at the scope that we were doing before the pandemic. Uh, we do want to grow it some and it probably warrants having some sort of part-time dedicated person for that role. Um, and then we'll probably need to keep adding more part-time support in both recreation and library to be healthy and functional. And then for succession planning, this new model that we've implemented, we think accomplishes a key part of that because now. Um, it's very clear, there's an assistant director who would assume. The director responsibilities either and as an interim res- assignment or as a permanent assignment if. Uh, the director were to be gone for some reason. So, uh, that's our plan with respect to the department. Um, I can pause if there's any questions about community services, uh, before I move on to another department.
Are there any questions from the council? Uh, please continue.
Okay. Um, so actually I just want to, I forgot I had put a slide in just to emphasize what it is we want to accomplish, which is to bring back library service levels and then increase programming. Okay. So now I want to move on to administration. That's the other department. We've been very focused on. Where we are and where we want to go. So, uh, administration is my office, the city clerk's office and then the finance, uh, administrative services function. So right now the staffing is myself, the administrative services director, the city clerk, the assistant to the city manager. And then we have two, uh, accounting roles filled in our finance operation. And then we have a budgeted administrative assistant position that's was recently vacated. And that position's in my office and works under the assistant to the city manager. We'd like as part of the mid-year budget to actually change the administrative assistant to an analyst role. And I'll talk about that a little more in a second and why we think that would, uh. Help us grow some of the work that we're doing in the administrative ranks. We're also looking pretty hard at our finance function, uh, taking, uh, into account two factors. One is. The comments we've gotten from the auditors about trying to spread responsibilities. Out a little more with the ever increasing checks and balances. We already do a lot of that, but we can do more. Uh, and secondly, uh, would like to move some of the, uh, in the weeds. Touching the books work that the director needs to do in the current setup. And move that to a staff person to free up the director to take on some higher level responsibilities that she just can't get to right now. So we're looking at potentially adjusting our accounting technician role in this mid-year budget. Uh, and giving that person a broadened, uh, set of responsibilities. And then, um, we looked at the fiscal impact of these changes and it's very modest and the reason it's very modest. Is that the actual incumbent in the administrative assistant position was, uh, fairly high within that classifications. Uh, compensation rate. So, um, we think we'll actually end up with a pretty modest impact to make those two mid-year adjustments. And then our future need talking about finances, uh, and it's twofold. It's both, uh. Just in general, we think we'd function better. And then secondly, for succession planning, we need to create some sort of. Management position in finance that works under the administrative services director. That will, uh, accomplish two key things. It will allow the administrative services director to. Put more of her focus and attention into the director role. Because she won't be the primary lead in, uh, in the books all the time. Uh, and it also will give us someone that we can groom potentially to be the successor to the administrative services director. Um, and I can tell you, as challenged as I have been to fill the community development position. I, I would be lost if Kathy left right now. It's, don't leave Kathy. And then, uh, on top of it, I, that market is particularly competitive right now. So. That position need of a management role is something we'll be studying and bringing in a future budget. It will be part of this mid-year adjustment. And then, uh, I wanted to just explain about the analysts a little bit and why I think. Upgrading the position from, uh, its current assistant classification to analyst would be helpful. Uh, we'd like to expand our centralized support for the city. We do a. We'd like to expand our centralized support for the city, we do a lot out of admin where we try to support other functions. So one is we'd like to centralize sustainability, we've kind of got it decentralized right now where each department is. Picking pieces up that are that fit their function. Now that you've updated the. The climate action plan and some of our other documents. I think it'd be a good idea to take on a more centralized management role, and I'd like to house that in my department. And I'd be asking assistant to the city manager Shannon O'Hare and the analyst to be the leads on dealing with. That centralized sustainability role. And then we'd also like to broaden the role of the city clerk in terms of support for boards and commissions, that's something that. As we're evolving our staff, we're realizing. The departments aren't really in the position they once were to give the full breadth of support to boards and commissions and getting that. That clerk level support will help a lot to make sure the meetings are run smoothly and. Particularly if we go to hybrid. Meeting models and we start to offer both in person and. Online exchange, I think it'll be critical that the city clerk office have that function, and so we view both the clerk and the analyst helping with that role. We have made tremendous strides in our public communication program and our engagement program, but we can do more. And we think the analyst classification will draw candidates. With a greater breadth of comfort working in those arenas. And then continued support to the administrative services director as she. implements financial oversight and control, and that's in particular that other. Position I would like to change, which is upgrading the accounting technician to a broader responsibility. So I'll stop there, if there are any questions about administration.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, I personally find these suggestions very impressive. And appropriate, I'd like to hear from other council members on their comments or questions. Council member way.
Yes, um, thank you, Dan, for that presentation, I, I think you're, we're looking at. Or you're looking at really enhancing these roles for the type of work that we need to do. Um, my question is, how do you go about recruiting, is there? Do you use recruitment team or is there like a like a LinkedIn sort of source for this? Is there an opportunity for us to better help you promote it in any ways?
So. Your question's quite timely, we are doing a. Beta test right now of our new recruiting system. As the council knows, the public may not be as familiar. There's a housing, I mean, I'm sorry, there's a human resources manager. In the Central Marine Police Authority. Larkspur purchases about twenty five percent of that person's time. To help Larkspur with human resources matters. The incumbent Janet Thieson was able to negotiate with. A company called NeoGov, which is a a company that provides recruit online recruitment software and resources to government entities. It's a wonderful system, I've I've experienced it in my other employment in the past. But it was something that wasn't appropriate for the Larkspur budget. But by having central and police, central and fire, cord of there in Larkspur. Work together, we Janet was able to negotiate a license that all four of us could collectively utilize. That'll present some branding challenges because we want to make sure candidates know where they'd actually be working. But this is a long way to get to. We are listing a position right now on governmentjobs.com, which is the front end interface. It's a well known website to government employees and and to people interested in entering government. And then NeoGov is in the backend, we'll be able to properly manage. Applications, we'll actually be able to use the system to notify people who've already expressed interest through. The system that they're interested in working in our region and they're interested in the type of job we're listing. And then. What we will do is is make sure the council is aware when we post a job, so you're always welcome to tell people we've listed a job and and they should go apply. You know, particularly when we do something like the analyst job where. You know, we'll take somebody with the skill set and we'll teach them how to work in government, so. You know, I think we all know people who fit that description, so. Hope that addresses the whole, the breadth of your question.
Yeah, it did, and and then lastly, you say broaden city clerks office support for boards and commissions. I know some city clerks. Do a lot of workforce council members and it hasn't been our tradition to do that. Are you seeing that we expanding the city clerks in that role also?
Well, I think that would be a conversation about what what services the council member, individual council members are looking for. In other jurisdictions where there's a lot of service to the council members, it's a lot of. Office work, I'd say. And so the analyst might actually be somebody who that would be well. You know, so maybe we would assign and do that. I think what we've been doing is case by case as individual council members contact us and need support for something, we've been able to. To find somebody to do it. But this particular item I was speaking to is. You know, right now in planning, for example. The senior planner has essentially been the clerk to the planning commission and. That, that's not necessarily. The best use of her when she's trying to also engage the planning commission. So having somebody who can help with that, having somebody can just put the agenda packets together so the staff. Freezes up their time to be serving the public, you know, that that type of thing, really helpful.
Thanks.
Other council member questions for the city manager? Please continue.
Okay. So community development's next. These are the funded positions, and several of them are vacant, the director. I'm cautiously optimistic, we're getting close on filling that position, we have had a lot of interest since the new year. The chief building official is a position you agreed to fund. That we are holding off until we have a director or at least have a. A verbal commitment from a director candidate, so that way. That person is involved in hiring. The chief building official, except that's a very key position going forward in our model. And that's a function in the past we've outsourced. We have a senior planner and as I indicated, we think. She's looking at the calendar and the date's probably coming, so. If she doesn't, that's fantastic, because she's extremely helpful, but if she does, we want to be ready so we can to move. To deal with that. And we have a funded associate planner position, that's another one we've been challenged to fill. And then we have funding for two permit techs in quite a bit of contract support. For the midyear budget, we actually need to make sure that the director and the chief building official are properly accounted for, we didn't bring those new. Positions to you until July because they were stimulated in part by the decision of Neil Talk to retire. The other thing is, we've really been thinking about our new permit software, our land management software. And we've been talking to the staff and we think a more general position than permit tech would be really helpful. And so going forward for now, we would like to have just one permit tech and then we'll take the funding. And we'll assign it to hire an administrative assistant. So that's a more entry level generalist role where we'll train the person. To do a variety of tasks throughout the department and give a broader scope of. Task support than we currently ask of a permit tech. We actually had this model in place a few years ago where we had one permit tech and one admin assistant and it was. Working relatively well until the load of building permits skyrocketed. Now with the new software, we think one permit tech will be able to manage the situation with the support of from an admin assistant. And the total for all these changes. Probably about ten to fifteen thousand, when you look at the the net of everything for the department. And I think it'll be money, an increase that's that's well spent. After we hire these folks, I don't see a future need for the department in terms of staffing. One reason for that is community development is. A function where once you built your model and you fill your model. Then you use contract support for the busy periods and then you don't need to pay those folks when you're in a quieter period, so. And then our senior planner role really needs to be used as our our way of grooming for a future. Director going forward, so that'll be part of our succession planning going forward. And quite frankly, I'd be proud and happy if our senior planner position. Becomes our next door neighbors director and if we start building up. A reputation as a great place to hone your craft and be a director, that'll pay for itself. And do might might help Marin as a community too. Right now, one of the reasons the director position's been difficult to fill is. There is a lack of experienced senior planners, the ones that are are all getting close to where they're going to retire. Or they've been promoted recently.
Dan, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Are the are the opportunities greater or? More constrained for? In the future for the Twin Cities to ever operate as a single community development entity. Larkspur and Corder Madera, how do you see that over the next couple of decades? Do you think we have a chance of ever achieving that or you think things are such that we would should should? Stop trying and focus more on sustainability of our own. Community development operation.
I think as long as there are two planning commissions and two municipal codes and two general plans. And two zoning ordinances, you need to have two high level management level planning staffs. Where I think there's potential for more work with Corder Madera is on the building side, but. It'll take some time, I think two key things are happening now that. Will help us build those bonds, one is we share the same fire marshal. Now that we share the same fire marshal. We're getting uniform approaches to that aspect of building evaluation. My counterpart and I have been talking about providing backup to one another for building inspections. And going forward in our model, so that'll build another bond. So I think down the road, if I saw potential, it's probably on the building side to start to to share services more.
Are there questions from the council members on the city managers' report regarding community development? Please continue.
Okay. So now I want to talk a little bit about public works where. I can be pretty quick, we're we're staffed, I think, the way we should be right now. So we have the director, the senior engineer and an assistant engineer. We're very fortunate that all three of these individuals are. Licensed engineers, that's that's a real benefit to us. And the assistant engineer actually obtained his certification since he's been with us, so. We have two analysts on the staff, they do a lot of. Project management, one of our analysts does a lot of work for the parks and. Has become a familiar face to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And the other analyst does a lot of the financial work for the department, you know, we. Really value those roles because we move a lot of money through public works. Our public works technician does everything from GIS to certain out in the field evaluations and functions. We have a funded public works inspector position. And that's one that if we did come to you anytime soon, it might be. We're seeing signs in the industry that we might need to rethink that job description and. And description and the valuation, so that we get the right type of person. On the maintenance side, we have a public work superintendent and he oversees six maintenance workers. So we're not proposing.
May I ask the city clerk if there are any members of the public that have questions or comments? This far along, I apologize for not asking this at breaks.
I'm looking for any raise hands from our audience members. Or any email comments so far?
All right, sorry for the interruption, Dan, please.
That's okay. So there aren't any staffing adjustments in the midyear budget for public works. And then right now, we don't have a projected future need, although as I noted, we may revisit. Whether public works inspectors write title and specification for that role. And then for succession planning, we we should be looking in the future to the senior engineer role. Or in some agencies, the senior engineer is filled by an assistant director level. Role specification, one or the other, but they're serving that second in command on the engineering side role, and that's where you look to build. A potential successor. But you know, Julian even hints that he's leaving, I might chain him to his desk, so I can't go anywhere. I don't know if he's still on the, in the meeting. So that's my finish on public works and I'm happy to take any questions there before I move on to. To talk about some unanticipated expenses.
Any questions from the council? Are there any questions from the public?
Looking for any raise hands from our audience members or email comments. And there's no public comment.
Uh, thank you. And I I'll try to find a cryogenics clinic for you, thank you.
So every year when we do the midyear budget, we have. Things we just had to do that weren't in the budget, we didn't know we would have to do them, but usually your public works matters that came up. And we, unfortunately, this year we had a big hit. On a different area, one we don't normally have come up, and that's, well, it doesn't come up at this magnitude, I should say. The city obtains its insurance by belonging to what's called an insurance pool, so we collectively work with. Twenty one other agencies to pool our money to either. Cover claims against the city or to purchase insurance for specific needs of the city. It's a government entity, I actually sit as a representative on the board of that organization. Every year, the organization needs to true up its costs based on what actually comes in in like the months of May and June, particularly as premiums are. Final, the final premiums are negotiated on particular insurance products. This year was pretty ugly, three hundred and sixteen thousand true ups. So some of that is because something happened, for example, Varsper experienced perhaps more workers comp expenditures than expected. But I can tell you what half of this is, which is general liability insurance. Basically, the industry right now has a joke, ABC, anything but California. It's just really expensive to insure public entities in California right now, that's problem one. And then problem two is it's very expensive to ensure two different functions. That are of concern. Broadly, they didn't really hit us in this number, but I'm mentioning them, and that's police and fire. For us in Larkspur where it hits us on fire is we have to ensure our own properties, just like a private property owner, and so. That general liability cost has has really taken a hit. And hopefully, we've we won't continue to see spikes now that we've had this true up. Experience, but it it actually represents about half of this cost. The other two things that will be programming in the midyear adjustment that. That we didn't foresee, you heard Julian in his presentation tell you about the sinkhole on Magnolia. So the general fund reserve, we have money in the general fund reserve that's intended to absorb these sorts of things. He tells me barring any final costs that come in that we're at about fifty three, fifty four thousand. In costs for that sinkhole. The other thing is we've had to do some storm drain repairs that we weren't planning. Sixty thousand dollars to date that we've had to spend. The good news is that qualifies for the American Rescue Plan Act money, which I'll be talking about a little bit more shortly. So we won't have to hit the general fund directly, we can pay for those bills out of. Out of that ARPA money, so you'll, the council recall, we put all the ARPA money. Into a pot so we could keep track of it, so it's clearly delineated in our budget documents and our auditing documents. And then that'll help us with our reporting to the federal government. Since we've already spent this money, essentially what will happen at some point is. After you approve at your next meeting, Kathy will transfer. From the ARPA account into the general fund to pay the general fund back for. Having essentially fronted this payment. That's functional, what will happen, because we already did have to do this work. I can pause now if there are any questions or I can continue.
So Dan, why are you separating that Magnolia sinkhole from the general fund? Even though the report from Julian was that it was probably caused by a storm drain malfunction?
Yeah, it it's. We look, we looked at what we did and then we looked at the rules for documenting it and I'm concerned we'd spend more time. Trying to figure out what qualifies for the rescue act and what doesn't. And as you're going to see as I go forward, we've got plenty of things to spend that money on. That that are really clean and apparent and we won't have to worry at all about paperwork, so. That's why I think we should just assign the sinkhole to the general fund.
And can you remind us how much is in the ARPA?
Yeah, I'll be talking about that in a little bit, but we received two point nine million.
And that's it coming into into?
Yeah, so cash wise, we've received half of that. But the other payment is forthcoming, so we will get the other half.
Please proceed, Dan.
Okay. So just to summarize, our the proposed staffing that I want to bring to you at the next meeting. Could cost the general fund as much as fifty thousand dollars in this current fiscal year and then. Going forward and that final number will depend on the actual people we hire and their elections in terms of benefits. But that's a pretty good estimate of what the total cost that I'm proposing would be. That's still keeps us well below what we were spending on staff before the pandemic. So bear that in mind as as we talk about all of these things. And then we've had about four hundred thirty thousand that will bring you in unavoidable expenditures. Now, what I'd like to do is move on and talk about the use of one time money. And I want to preface my comments here in that. This is an unusual. Talk about one time money because it's not just. American Rescue Plan Act money or any grant monies that have come along. It's actually also some of our money, the council's heard me talk about the fact that for several years. We had been building up a pretty hefty cash reserve. In order to properly manage the bridge. And be able to pay bills on the bridge, well, the bridge is almost done. So that cash will be sitting in the general fund reserve and essentially super funding the reserve. Well above your policies, so. I was asked when we talked about the recently about the Commons project. Sort of, you know, if we had to come up with cash, what could we come up with? And you know, we really can comfortably, and I'll be talking about it today, I think, assign. As much as seven to eight million to to uses here. Now, I say that as I explain this to you, some of what I'm going to tell you is. Some of it I just want to sit on and hold and I'll explain why for a little longer. And then we will sign it at a future date. So with that sort of precursor, I'll get into the details so that all of that discussion makes more sense. So first, there are some one time expenditures on the horizon that are unavoidable. They're very similar to what we were just talking about where sinkholes and storm drains need to be fixed. We have a few that we know we need to do, so we'll need to pull them out of somewhere. And in fact, we have three that we strongly are going to recommend. The first is we have a storm drain problem at the at Larkspur Plaza. So that's right near Doherty and. The. Storm drain runs under the parking lot for some condos out that way and it's in pretty bad shape, needs to be repaired. We'll be able to assign that to the rescue act money to ARPA. We've needed for a long time to address the inlet gates for the lagoon at Larkspur Marina. And so I think that's something we really should assign some of this money to take care of. And that's roughly hundred fifty thousand. And then we have a pickup that's twenty years old that it's costing too much to keep limping along. And so we want to assign seventy five thousand to from the general fund to purchase a new pickup. And I know that's a big price tag, but that's a fully loaded with all the equipment, all the things that are. Four by four pickups going to need to serve public works, so. We can't just go down to the lot by a pickup and put it into service, we have to prepare it to to carry tools, etc. So those are three unavoidable costs that Julian Skinner, Public Works Directors identified. And then we have some unfunded CIP items that. When I pressed Julian, he said, these are ones that really should get taken care of and stuff, we're going to free up some of this money. We should address these as soon as possible. One is we have a lot of pump stations that need work. And we want to make sure that we're making it through, we made it through the last rainy season. But there's a lot going on behind the scenes to make it through and the equipment needs to be upgraded. It's a public safety issue to that. We think about two hundred thousand dollars and that it also is something to come out of the rescue plan money. And don't worry, I'll be showing you a summary of where this these pots are so that. Don't have to be scratching all the math right now. The other is, you know, you, if you are familiar, there's a pretty large retaining wall that the city is responsible for on Laurel Avenue. It's pretty visible if you're walking through downtown and you look up towards Laurel Avenue. And it really needs to have some significant work done to it, so. We're proposing that the general fund. Some of this money be assigned to do that project. And again, we have safety and liability concerns, so we want to prioritize that. And then another storm drain project that is at the top of the list for public works is Parkway. Has a storm drain that's in need of attention and that's one we would pull out of the rescue act money. Then we have some recommended expenditures that we'll be proposing at the next meeting that I wanted to highlight for you. So these are ones we think are a good idea based on current needs. The first is to fulfill one of our sustainability requirements, both one that you've identified. As a goal and also one that's now a legal responsibility in a few years. We think electric leaf blowers have reached a point that they make sense for the city. And so we'd like to actually purchase that equipment soon and get our guys used to using it. And transition away from our gas leaf blowers. You'll recall that our we exempted ourselves from the policy. When you first enacted it, it's appropriate now that we feel we can. Have a fleet of leaf blowers and it'll function properly for us, so we'd like to make that investment. That would be coming from the general fund reserve money. And then the scoreboard in Hall Middle School Gym made the list, not a huge expenditure. We have a gym maintenance account in the general fund that we place money in. To meet our responsibilities, we basically maintain the gym fifty percent, the city fifty percent, the school district. And we've agreed with the school district that we should replace the. Scoreboard, that price tag includes the installation of the, it's not just the equipment purchased. And that's a pretty modest amount, but I want to make sure it was on the list and you knew we'd be bringing it forward. And then one significant one. You know, I've spoken many times that. I'm so appreciative that our staff. Without, you know, without arm twisting, without, I mean, I'm going to never say anybody happily takes a pay cut. But they chipped in, they made sure we made it through the scariest part of the pandemic, when we weren't sure what our cash flow was going to be. In the final guidelines for the rescue act, it actually says you can restore. Money that you. Had to take from employees as part of a furlough or payroll payroll reduction. And so I'm going to recommend that the balance of what. We essentially needed at that time be restored to the employees through the rescue act pot. That was actually not cleared us, so I hadn't brought that up in the past. The I the Treasury Department included that, you know, this stuff. Uses and recommendations that they issued recently, so. And additionally. We're having what I label assignments, so this is where I'm saying we aren't going to spend the money, but we should designate it for a purpose and kind of park it for a bit. One is the rescue act talks about using the money to help you restore your staff. I don't know that we need to do that, I think we'll be able to restore staff entirely through the general fund. But that said, I would recommend we designate two hundred fifty thousand and we just have it sitting there for a while. In case we do need to dip into it to make sure the general fund deficit is just is. Dealt with as we restore particular community services staff. So this would be to allow our general fund revenues to continue to to build and catch up. The ARPA money has a deadline, so if you do take this recommendation. As we would near the deadline, if we don't use this money, then we would say, let's put it to work somewhere else, wouldn't want it to go to waste. But I think that would be very helpful to give us confidence as we try to build back our community services department in particular. And then the balance of the storm drains, it's actually about one point eight million, I have it on a another slide. We should ask. Public Works to complete their video scoping of our storm drain system. And then make recommendations on the use of the balance of the money for storm drains. I think that's our most pressing need, it's one of the cleanest and most obvious. Intense in terms of investment of the ARPA money in our community. So that's what I would recommend we do with the balance of the of the two point nine million. Two things that you've approved in the past and we told you would eventually hit the general fund reserve. One is all the costs we're incurring to do our general plan update and our housing element update. We actually require a fee be paid by every project into a pot of money. To help us do the general plan update and the housing element update. But in particular, the housing element update is so complicated this time, as the council knows, we had to go get consultant support. We also have a small army of consultants helping us get the general plan update to the finish line. And so when Kathy and I looked at the balance in the account now and what we think we're going to spend. I think it'd be appropriate to move half a million from the reserve into the pot of money that we designate. To cover those costs, that way we know it's there, we know those costs are covered, we don't have to to stress about that. Similarly, I mentioned we're upgrading software, particularly in management software. I think it would be helpful for us to know that half a million had been designated. Out of the general fund reserve for all of that cost, we've already approved those contracts. And we had told you that eventually we'd need to move the money from the reserve to do that. And then this is the big ticket one, and as we're waiting to apply to the state for the library grant. I've told the council, I think we should have asked for the largest amount possible, which is ten million dollars. We need to be prepared for that wonderful possibility, however remote it may or may not be, that the state would actually come back and say. We love your project, we're willing to give you ten million dollars. As you know, the. The Commons Foundation's goal is to raise five million so that, and they believe they'll hit that number. In time to help us. Document a match for the state, that means we need to be prepared to. Put five million dollars into the pot, so. I actually, we can sustain that right now in our general fund reserve with without jeopardizing the money that we keep aside. To protect the general fund from a rainy day. Now, this is by doing this, this is five million dollars that isn't available to do something else and I, it's as your. Primary fiduciary agent along with administrative service director. I did think it's important that I remind you that every dollar we contribute to the library. Is a dollar that that we won't use for unfunded CIP. And I'll show you that list before we conclude the presentation and talk this evening. So lastly. The summary of what I'll be bringing to you as of right now and I'll be listening for your feedback in this workshop. What to do with the two point nine million from the ARPA from the rescue plan. Half a million would be for two staffing matters on the repayment on the furlough, the second. Set aside just to give us some cover while we're stepping back up. We have a hundred and five thousand we've identified for unanticipated storm drain repairs that we either already did or we know are coming in the next month or two. And then suggesting half a million for specific unfunded CIP storm drain projects. That leaves us with one point eight million that I would challenge the public works department to put together a spending plan for. To invest in our storm drains. And I have to stop here for a second and say, you know, storm drains have become the thing I talked about with you a lot because I'm worried about them. When I show you my final numbers, which is that unfunded reminder about the unfunded capital improvement plan. We think we have twenty million plus in storm drain needs, so this is an important step, but. It's just scratching the surface of what the community needs to do together over the next several years to. To get our storm drains where they need to be. And then from the general fund reserve. We're gonna be bringing you three hundred and seventy thousand approximately in midyear adjustments and a lot of that's from that. Those unfortunate hits we're taking on the insurance side. And then we've identified about four hundred twenty five thousand in anticipated unavoidable projects. And then. One million to set aside for the contracts for planning purposes and technology. And then parking five million for the grant. We at this point, if if we do all of these things, we won't even have touched our twenty five percent reserve. That covers our general fund operations and our rainy day emergency funds, so that's pretty exciting. And at your next meeting, we'll do a more detailed accounting of the balance and what's still going to be in the general fund reserve if you. Take all of these actions. Because I wanted to have this workshop and just get some general conversation from you before. I put Kathy to work refining the then doing the detailed numbers. So before I open it up to the council, I will just briefly remind you, I have teed up here. So before I open it up to the council, I will just briefly remind you, I have teed up here. Hopefully this shares correctly. This is our challenge and this is a page that you have available to you from our CIP. You know, every dollar. We put into something from our general fund reserve is not going to something on this list and the council's practice and policy. Is that every dollar above the twenty five percent. Set aside for for the reserve for our operations. Is is supposed to go into capital. Or into unanticipated needs. So if we end up funding the library project and, you know, this could be the last time in our lifetimes. Where the state's throwing around this kind of money for libraries. So I think we we go for broke there, but that said, you know, we just have to be aware if we end up having to put. Money in of the from the general fund reserve, we may not be getting to some of our other challenges that we have on this list. And a little one that probably will bump up in my mind. Just to let you know, as I do think the improvements to the railroad building are. Are ones we may need to make sooner rather than later, just a reminder, what we call the railroad building is the old electric rail. House that's up there on the the Sandermark Trail near William Avenue and that's. We use that as our main storage facility and it it needs a lot of work. To to be. A better place for the city to be saving important materials. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I've concluded all the things that I planned to bring you. It's a lot of detail and. Open that and get some general feedback from the council.
I have two quick questions, first about the railroad building, is that the best place for us to be? Storing things?
It's the only place we own, so it's right now, we don't actually have anywhere else to store. Store items. So I guess my answer would be. It's the best given the constraint.
I see, and earlier you you used the word exciting. With respect to. The challenges facing us with respect to the the funding of liabilities. Was that a positive use of the word exciting or a negative use of the word exciting?
It's always positive for me if I say something's exciting, but I know it's not necessarily exciting for everybody else. I mean, overall. I I know Kathy's sitting there quietly off screen, I'm gonna attribute this as much to her as to me, but. I don't think the two of us have ever been as giddy as we've been recently about the city. I mean, I I just. You know, things are just right now, okay, I gotta knock on wood, if things have been going really where we want them to go financially and. I just still am flabbergasted at the momentum of the Commons Foundation, the support of the community in general. The success of Measure B, I mean, we may be having a conversation in three months. About what to do with the balance of the bond proceeds because Julian and his team. Brought the road project in under budget, I mean. These are, these are amazing conversations and for for finance folks and city manager folks are super exciting.
Well, it's a real compliment to Julian, you, Dan Schwartz and the team. Are there questions from the council regarding Dan's presentation? Councilman Way and then Councilmember Harrah.
I like seeing giddiness with a financial report from a small town like ours, but. I have two questions, first, the ARPA funds are different from the infrastructure bill that was passed.
They are.
And right, so we are looking at this budget with just the ARPA, which is the COVID relief money. Not knowing that we might get another bolus of funding for infrastructure at this point. So that won't be known until fall at the earliest.
So that's. You know.
It's hard to know, yeah.
It's hard to be certain when the government will, you know, make these awards finalized. As I said earlier, I wanna be optimistic about the infrastructure bill. But it already had a strong emphasis on. Types of infrastructure needs that are not necessarily ours. And then I do think the bridge collapse will skew some of the awards now, you've heard the president say. We're gonna fix every bridge in America, so. You know, that's a tall order. And we've been very fortunate, the federal government already paid to fix our bridges, so. We'll fight tooth and nail and I know our storm drains will be one of the things we submit. But, you know, we just have to go in knowing that's the situation. The other thing that. We just have to accept as part of being who Larkspur is right now as a community is. Some of the social equity and economic issues that are dominant in the country and in the state. Are gonna send money to communities that need it. And the 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 measures may not be the measures where Larkspur ranks as well.
And and then last question, thank you, is you didn't factor into your list relocating city offices from four hundred Magnolia. Not the retrofit of the four hundred Magnolia seismically, which is listed in there, but. Whether we need to fund a way to move city offices and public spaces somewhere else.
Yeah, partly because I don't know what the council wants me to do yet, but I think it, you know. I wouldn't, I can bring you at the meeting, the next meeting, a rough estimate of what we should set aside for that.
Okay, I I'd like that because I think we're, I think we need to look at that in tandem with a new community facility parcel, library, community space. If that needs to be in tandem.
Great question, thank you. Other council members' questions, Councilmember Harrah and then Scott.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. I thought that presentation was terrific and. Particularly the items in the on the are are the availability of money under the ARPA legislation. I have always shared your concern about the fragility of our existing stormwater system. And this seems like a tremendous tremendous opportunity to finally go after that with 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 vigor and. Sounds good to me. Also, the the kind of catch up or the proposals to do catch ups on. On some of the burdens that they our staff has had to had to share as we've gone through. Uncertain times over the last couple of years. I think those are terrific suggestions and I I completely would endorse them. The the one that gives me a little concern and I'm and then actually Catherine's question a moment ago kind of. Reinforces that concern is the five million dollar set aside for the for the library facility. And maybe I really, maybe I just didn't understand why doing a formal set aside. As opposed to just holding the money. Without making a prior designation gets us a benefit that we wouldn't otherwise have.
Well, I I could do it. To be consistent with what I think you're suggesting from your question, we could simply not designate five million dollars knowing. We might need it to match the state grant.
Right, and if we if we if we do it that way. Do we jeopardize access to state money? I guess that's the that's.
No, the way this grant works is they'll just come back and say, we're giving you X amount.
Yeah.
Have and you have to match it and they don't really. As long as it's local money, they don't really care where it comes from.
That I that's that's what I would think and. Yeah, I know there there may be some. Some ancillary benefits for doing a set aside in terms of sending signals to the community about our commitment to the facility and those are. Those are beneficial. But in terms of the city's finances. I'm just wondering whether that's necessary and it sounds like as a financial matter, it's not necessary in terms of. Whether we would jeopardize access to state money. So that does give me a little bit of a worry and as I said Catherine's suggestion about. You know, things that are still a little up in the air about what we may want to use that for, certainly we're not gonna spend five million dollars on. Building temporary office buildings, but. Maintaining flexibility. With the money is maybe something worth considering.
Could I ask that you clarify from a words used earlier in your presentation regarding. Worth, I think you the words you use and I apologize if I've got it wrong, you, this is worth the gamble and worth. Going for broke. Act it was worth respect to the state matching grant.
I, yeah, so let me, if I could first just complete a comment about Councilmember Haroff's statement, so. I just wanna be clear, somehow I think it's important to signal. That there's a pot of money that we're not gonna spend on anything, so if if. If the term set aside is causing heartburn, I I don't need to actually use that term, but I do think it'll be important. For your direction to the staff to be. We know there's five million dollars that you just aren't supposed to touch for a certain amount of time. Right, you're not supposed to come and bring us any proposals because otherwise, now going to what Mayor Hillmer was getting at. If we put in this application and our community support through the Commons Foundation is only five million and then. We we go for the the twenty million dollar project, we do need to have five million from somewhere, so. Whether we call it a set aside or. Or we just say there's five million in the general fund reserve that shouldn't be touched for the next six months. It accomplishes the same thing for me, so. And these are all policy direction of the council more so.
Sure.
Accounting matters.
Sure, and I guess that may maybe that's what I'm getting at, whether there's a need from an accounting perspective to do that because it would jeopardize. Access to grant funding. We could say, we could say to the public, we have the money.
Well, I think the important thing is is to be clear with the public why you're sitting on the money, right? So, because I think one of the good reasonable questions the taxpayer deserves to know is. We have a plan to put our excess reserves to work, we're not just saving to save. Right, so so I think that's where I'm coming from, just trying to be as transparent as possible.
And 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 I appreciate that.
Why we're managing.
Yeah, and really, my my my, the point of my question was not to question. That aspect of it, the point of my question was to make sure that whatever we do here. Allows us to continue to make the commitments we've made to the community, but also doesn't. Create an issue for us in terms of of access to funds.
Fair enough.
I would frame it as optimizing resources under current conditions. Other questions from the council members regarding this item?
Think Councilmember Candice. Thank you, thanks, Mr. Mayor, Dan, first of all, fantastic presentation. Is it possible for me to get a copy of that? I would love to look at it in more detail prior to our next meeting.
Yeah, I have to apologize, I intended for it to be up on the website and emailed all of you earlier and. Something went wrong, so I think I sent you an email after the meeting started and you probably have it sitting there.
Perfect, thank you.
And it will be up on the website for the public.
Perfect, first question, my understanding is we have a million dollars that we got from our congressman's efforts. Our local representative, I didn't see that included in the money for the library, how does that play into the big picture?
So. So we have been engaged with the state library's office on obtaining the million dollars. And what they ultimately asked us to do is submit a grant application for the million dollars. To justify its award essentially. And that's actually been a really helpful process for us because it's allowed us to. Get a better sense of how the that office thinks about the grant money that it assigns. And one one thing they've really emphasized with us is they want a delineation between the use of that million dollars. And the future complete project. So what Julian Skinner did for us is he parsed out. A way that we would spend the million dollars on. Infrastructure underneath the ground, for example, and other things he could define as sort of a standalone million dollar project. Because that's what they told us they wanted us to do and then they wanted us to be clear. That's not part of our ask when we ask for the the big pot of money. And they've been very clear, you can't put the million dollars into the matching pot, you're not allowed to do that because it's not local money, so. I was super excited when we first got the million thinking we were one million closer on the matching side, but they were very explicit that we're not allowed to do that.
So 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 could you, could you explain then, I I mean, does this make our project now hypothetically twenty one million dollars that we still have? Five million from the foundation, five million from the city, ten million dollar match and then an extra million. That we can't use for any other purposes, am I hearing you correctly?
Well, yes, in a sense, yes, but bear in mind. You know, when we when we go for broke, as I said earlier, when we asked the big ask. If you get that award, you're not just having to build a building, but you're gonna move a function over to a new building, you may have to be buying new furnishings. You may need to buy more materials or different materials, so. We were probably gonna bear that kind of expense from somewhere anyway and it may be that now. We're able to program more of that cost into the 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 twenty million dollar ask or the ten million dollar ask of the state, I mean, so. But in in concept, yes, it's a it's another million on top of it. All things told.
Okay, follow up question, just following up on on one of Catherine's questions. The city offices were, if if we were going to move the city offices to the new location for the library. Is that included in the twenty million dollars? Does that project include city offices?
So. My recommendation right now is we ask the state, we propose a twenty million dollar project to the state. And that would be the library community center function. It doesn't include city offices because those don't qualify for the grant. Once we know what that grant amount is, we plan on coming back to you and saying, okay, now we know we're getting this amount from the state. Now we know the Commons Foundation is gonna be able to come up with this amount. And here's what we as a city need to throw into the pot to get to the finish line. Now, what do we do about the city offices? Do you want us to propose building them into the project and? And finding money to do that? Do you want us to look at renting space somewhere? Do you want us to look at rehabbing? City Hall, like, we'll have to have that conversation.
I but 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 just just so I understand, again, hypothetically, they give us seven million and, you know, we 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 match seven and seven, it's fourteen and we say, okay. We we wanna put the city offices in there, is the twenty million dollar price tag kind of regardless of where the money comes from? Does that include city offices if that's what we choose or is, I mean, I I I'm trying to understand if we decide to put city offices in there, does that add to the price tag? Or does it change the the structure and keep a similar price tag?
So. The. The reason I'm having trouble answering the question is there's what we wanna tell this, what what we're gonna ask of the state. And the state wants to see what a twenty million dollar facility that they'd be willing to pay half for looks like. And so we'll be submitting a description to them of what that facility looks like and it's entirely. A library community serving space. If they come back and they say, we love your idea, but we're only awarding you. Seven million, like your example. seven million, like your example. Then, and we need to have a match of seven million. Then the question, then I think what we would, as a staff, wanna have a conversation about is if the option of putting city offices on that property is of interest to the council and the community, let's do it in a way so that it could be reprogrammed down the road for another community purpose, if that makes sense. So a flexible type of arrangement. But it's hard for me to, to get to what these final price tags look like until that driving answer comes from the state, which is how much are you gonna give us? Knowing that what they give us has to be fifty percent of that library community function. If, if we are blessed with the big award, then when we're done building a twenty million dollar facility that's dedicated to those uses, I don't know there's a lot of space left for city offices on the property. So that's something.
Off for my opinion about the discussion. I, I think it's a little bit premature to be asking for commitments about how we strategize this, given the creativity that's gone into the applications and the resources trying to be created here. So I think what the city manager is trying to say is let's get to a point where we can evaluate what we have so we can reassess exactly what we need to do with it regarding our needs.
That's, that's fair. I, I appreciate that. And that was the only question I had. Thanks.
And I think I'd only add, I think I'd only add, Mr. Mayor. I think when Kathy and I bring you the full report at the next meeting, we'll be able to sort of speak to these questions about is there gonna be some money in the reserve to deal with the office space issue? And, and I think the answer is gonna be yes, independent of what I've talked about this evening. But I'll work with Kathy. So we have a clear answer to that at your next meeting.
And I, I think the community really appreciates the creativity that's gone into our approach to optimize our resources. I'm very excited and in your words, super excited about our opportunity here. Other council member questions from the city manager regarding this item?
Mr. Mayor, we're gonna have to upgrade.
This is to.
We're gonna have to upgrade your wifi, Mr. Mayor. You're very halting in your video tonight. So.
Well, I was sorry. I'm using, I was using a city hotspot. All right. So this direction is looking forward to action taking the sixteenth meeting. Mr. City Manager?
Oh, I did see that Vice Mayor Paulson's put his hand up.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. No, just very briefly, I, I really appreciate some of the council members' comments. Particularly about having a backup plan for moving the offices, you know, rather than a full boom and what to do with four hundred Magnolia. And, and I, I, I just wanna express appreciation for the focus on the I also, you know, I've mentioned a few times, I really issue where we wanna get ahead of, you know, what's happening with the weather and climate change and so forth. So I'm like, I just wanna endorse that. And, and I think the report was excellent. So thank you.
Thank you. I would say this is a direction to be taken by resolution at the February sixteenth meeting. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to add to your report this evening?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor. And I think I've gotten key feedback on a couple of points. And we'll make sure when we bring this back on the sixteenth, we have answers to questions.
Very good. That concludes the, the business items on this evening's agenda. The next item on the agenda is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So seconded.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Journing to our next regular meeting on February. Mr. City Manager?
I just wanna one more time thank Kathy or I'm the administrative service director who really does all the brains. I've brought, you know, the real work for all the numbers that make me look good when I do those presentations. So.
We wanted to thank the city staff and the team very much. Scott?
No, I was just gonna say the exact same thing. Thank you, everybody.
We were all gonna say the same thing, apparently.
All right. Good night. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Night.